Counselors and everyone, welcome back to our Finance Committee. We're going to be starting our Finance Committee sessions here for the end of the year or beginning of the year for 2019 budget, rather. We have 45 minutes with the mayor, 30 minutes for a presentation and a slideshow with finance staff, Mr. Parsons and Ms. Carlson here to help answer questions in 15 minutes or so for council questions. And just a reminder, everyone, that we have a council budget discussion next Thursday to discuss additional ideas and ask further questions with finance staff. So we can ask in-depth questions then, maybe get a feel for the budget tonight, ask some questions and ask for the questions on the 20th. So with that, Mayor Larson, if you are ready, I will hand...you have the microphone.
Thank you Chair Filipovic, and thank you counselors. Thank you for your service to the community. Tonight, I present to you my proposed 2019 general fund budget and property tax levy. What makes sense to me is to talk this through first, then we're going to do some handouts, and then as Counselor Filipovic, Chair Filipovic suggested, a PowerPoint presentation. We have a lot to do in 45 minutes, but I am ready to get started. So thank you for your service to our community. In my time as mayor, I have become a budget geek. I am drawn to the hard work that goes into getting the annual budget right. Identifying values, needs, and priorities for the organization isn't really a fine art, but funding them is. And where we get the funding necessary to operationalize all that we need to do as a city, for 86,000 residents, 35,000 daily commuters, and 6.7 million tourists truly matters. In my first budget as mayor, we focused primarily on setting a foundation for fair taxation. We made the large ask of our community to shift from the one-size-fits-all, flat, monthly fee structure previously implemented to pay for streets over to the more equitable and proportional property tax. We also adjusted the long stagnant franchise fee structure. Budget one was simply called Budget. It was straight up and to the point. My second budget was focused on shared sacrifice across all divisions. We cut 20 positions and increased by more than one-third funding for streets. It was painful and necessary. Annually and left unchecked, our spending outpaces our revenue in large part because of flat local government aid and annual double-digit healthcare costs. Maintaining core city services residents rely on comes at an increased cost every year. Eighty-four percent of our general fund budget goes to people. People who drive snowplows, shelve library books, respond to 911 calls, and process building permits. Decreasing services isn't an option many residents get excited about, and politically it certainly isn't easy. But last year, we needed to do it to get ahead of the disproportionate outpacing of spending we were facing. Budget two was called Shared Sacrifice for the Common Good. At the same time, in my second budget, we placed heavy emphasis on infrastructure and streets and delivered an honest portrayal of what it means to scrape year to year for infrastructure funds from existing resources. And as a result, that fall, a referendum for dedicated sales tax funding for streets passed in every single precinct across the city with a 77% approval rating. We remain deeply committed to getting the sales tax ratified at the Minnesota Legislature this coming year. Doing so will triple our investment in streets. Which brings us to year three, when the hard work we've done, the difficult decisions we've implemented, and the many, many sacrifices staff and residents have made start arcing toward a shared purpose. This budget, I am calling Forward Together. And for the first time as mayor, I am excited about our city budget. Forward Together is focused on alignment. This budget fully reflects the values and vision I campaigned on from that same Forward Together theme for mayor during 2015. It does so not just because I think these are the right decisions for Duluth, but because our public does too. In this budget, we are pairing the strategies and policy recommendations from Imagine Duluth 2035, our recently adopted comprehensive plan, and/or with the time-intensive, staff-driven, and community-influenced process called Priority-Based Budgeting. Duluth is the first city in the state of Minnesota to implement priority-based budgeting. But my prediction is that we will not be the last. Imagine Duluth 2035 was led by our city staff rather than contracted to an outside entity. In a period of 18 months, we engaged residents through 175 public meetings, 5,500 public surveys, and a vision committee of 50 community leaders. It yielded 28 policies, 245 strategies across five areas: housing, economic development, transportation, energy, and open space, and was adopted by you earlier this year. Priority-based budgeting is an inclusive process that started in-house with staff during December of 2017, has involved input from our entire director and manager team of 60-plus people within the city, and engaged the feedback of 533 residents at downtown sidewalk days events and City Hall in the city. This budget, Forward Together, is straightforward, it is low drama, and it is effective. It harnesses the economic growth we've experienced, prioritizes the feedback we've received through our extensive community engagement efforts, limits overall spending, and focuses our staffing and financial investment into the core areas we've embraced through Imagine Duluth and priority-based budgeting. So to cut to the chase, I am proposing a city levy tax increase impact of 3.96% for 2019. Residents who own a home valued at $100,000 will pay $9 more for the values and priorities of Forward Together. Residents who own a home valued at $175,000 will pay $20 more. And this is what you and they will get for that. Here is what Forward Together achieves. Within housing, I am proposing a single-family home renovation fund focused on the Lincoln Park and Central Hillside neighborhoods through a commitment of $2 million from the Community Investment Trust Fund. This would leverage other funders through a partnership I intend to build with St. Louis County, local banks, Duluth Lisk, Duluth HRA, One Roof, and others to acquire and rehabilitate tax forfeit and condemn properties in order to create redevelopment momentum in these neighborhoods and preserve naturally occurring affordable housing. The concept is a revolving fund to help fund and seed rehabilitation and redevelopment of affordable housing within these two neighborhoods. This builds on Imagine Duluth 2035, priority-based budgeting, community input, and my participation in learning as a Greater Minnesota Housing Finance Agency Board Member and as an appointed member of the Governor's Task Force on Housing. This action would and will require a vote of seven members of the Duluth City Council at the end of the calendar year. And a separate committee of the whole meeting will be scheduled in November or December to review a more fully-formed plan. This is the first time I have made a request from the Community Investment Trust, and I believe ensuring affordability is worth its consideration. Within economic development, the city of Duluth has an important opportunity to provide clarity for our business and employer community. I am proposing a staff person to come online mid-year to engage in outreach and education activities for the earned sick and safe time policy the city council passed during May of this year. We now have a responsibility to implement this new initiative by 2020. This will require additional staff and dedicated outreach funding. In addition, I propose that we fill the voter-approved policy and communications position I have left open for three years. With over $1 billion of anticipated private investment from our healthcare sector in the next few years, the potential $184 million public infrastructure ask we have prepared for the Minnesota Legislature to support that private investment, newly-created opportunity zones across the city which are expected to garner multimillion-dollar investments, and the need to successfully get the sales tax over the finish line this year, we simply need more bodies doing this work. We need to keep certain that growth taking hold in Duluth continues to meet the needs of our residents. Within transportation, we have set aside and protected a $500,000 increase to the streets' budget over the flat investment of 2.8 million made in most previous years. We are able to do this because of our diligence in paying down bond debt as fast as we can and by adding more through this proposed levy. As we await ratification of the dedicated sales tax, I am committed to continuing progress in this area even if it's incremental. I am proposing a transportation planner for the city of Duluth, a new position that will be focused on providing alignment with the values embedded in our Imagine Duluth 2035 comprehensive plan, connecting projects and funding sources, leading public engagement, and providing project efficiency. Our streets program is currently implemented on a street-by-street basis. This is effective for stretching dollars on the surface, and our staff does incredible work with what we provide for resources. But generally, our current process ends with mixed messages to the public, frustrated residents and staff in street-by-street discussions pitting sidewalks versus bike lanes versus accessibility versus parking. It simply doesn't work, and we can do better. This mid-year start date aligns with planning for projects scheduled for 2020. Additionally, our sidewalk snow removal efforts just need more attention. We currently have a four-tier sidewalk system for snow clearing. We are understaffed, and we lack enough equipment to get through it after one snowfall and before the next. At the same time, we have a policy that requires us to clear sidewalk snow, which our plows place on private property in the normal course of plowing. In our research, we have found no other cities in the United States who hold that promise, likely because it is an unsustainable, unfulfilled, and unfunded commitment. I am proposing we remove the clause which requires the city to clear sidewalks after routine plowing and increase our attention to those four tiers of sidewalks, which were created in partnership with the school district, with St. Louis County Public Health, disability advocates, and core investment area groups. We achieve increased staffing for snow removal with minimal financial impact due to savings in other areas, and the scheduled purchase of equipment through the CIP request, which will come before council later this year. Within energy, last year, the council supported my proposal to invest $895,000 from our reserves into the Minnesota Power Solar Garden with a projected payback of $2 million over the 20-year contract term. A few quarters into the agreement, we are on track to yield our projected savings of $80,641,400 kilowatt-hours in year one. We have placed significant financial focus on energy in the past two years, and we are reaping those benefits of investments. This year, we will work to advance our efforts in the energy arena in ways that will not impact our budget for 2019. I anticipate activating a commission to work in support of our energy plan in the coming year. This is a promise I made early on, and I intend to fulfillment, to fulfill it. Open space, our final category from the Imagine Duluth Plan. Several years ago, the city made the important financial decision to end staffing for in-house youth programming within our parks, and I'm sure that was a difficult decision. I know it's been difficult for our community, and I'm certain, actually, that it's having an impact now on kids and families who could have benefited from consistent free youth programming in the last decade. Through a series of fortunate events, we have an opportunity to resume youth programming at a scale of affordability that can actually work while meeting the high demand for youth programming across the community. The city is partnering with the Duluth Family YMCA, the Northland Foundation, and the Minnesota Land Trust to expand citywide year-round recreation programming for youth and families. I am proposing an additional $280,000 investment to fund two full-time, year-round city recreation staff and up to eight year-round AmeriCorps members who will provide recreation programming in partnership with the city's many youth-serving organizations and agencies. The investment will support the goals of Youth Outdoors Duluth, the Duluth Children's Outdoor Charter, and Imagine Duluth 2035 to ensure that all youth have access to the array of outdoor, adult-supervised, and park-based experiences available in Duluth. There are other exciting elements to Forward Together that you'll hear about in the coming months through director presentations of departmental budgets. Many won't have levy or increased budget impact, but the influence of these choices will resonate throughout the community. The addition of a custodian within public spaces made available through in-house cost savings. The virtual library cards being provided to all students of ISD 709. The new tower truck for our fire department, which received your council approval. The expansion of the community service officer program within the Duluth Police Department to meet the non-emergency needs that are important to our residents. Our team, through priority-based budgeting, has really worked magic. Our community, through Imagine Duluth 2035, have embraced a forward-focus vision, and this budget reflects both. Earlier this year, I asked my friend, former St. Paul Mayor Chris Coleman, if he had ever met a budget year he liked. Of his 12 years, he had one. "If that happens for you," he told me, "enjoy it." So I am, and I hope you do too. Let's move forward together. So with that, that's my budget narrative. And I think what I'd like to do is kind of clip through the presentation. Can we get materials to counselors as well so that they can read along? I want to thank our team, they are amazing, Wayne and Jen, who are available to work weekends, Chelsea, Dave, Gunner, everyone has just been awesome. Our directors have really put themselves in the middle of budgeting in a whole new way with this priority-based budgeting, so I just really want to thank everybody. It's been a really great intense use of time, and I think it's paying off. So if it's okay with you, can I just start the PowerPoint maybe while we're getting settled here?
Please begin, Mayor.
Thank you. Some of this is going to be review, some of it's just good to dust up on. The average property tax bill by taxing entity, of course, fits into an entire pie. I think it's important to point out to counselors and the public that the city of Duluth represents 26% of your property tax. There's a lot of assumptions that are made about how taxes are generated and spent, and it certainly feels like we get the, sometimes, the brunt of people's frustrations of total property tax approaches. But just to share that the city is 26% of that pie, the school district is 25%, St. Louis County is 42%, the parks referendum, which was a voter-supported choice, is 3%, and then other, which would be equivalent of DTA, HRA, DETA, things like that, would be 4%. That slide looks a little funny on the screen, but it looks really good on paper. So let's go with your paper one. So the total proposed budget by fund type. Again, the city of Duluth, today I'm talking about the general fund, I'm talking about the property tax that feeds into the general fund, that's $88 million. And as you can see in that top right-hand kind of pie section, that's a part of the budget. The total budget for the city of Duluth, if you include all of the enterprise funds and all of the special dedicated funds, is about $250 million. What that means is that all of those other dedicated funds are going to places for which they are fully supported, dedicated, protected. The general fund is the one by which we have some impact and control over. It's also the one where we deliver the most services, actually, or at least the services most people see as being those of Duluth. Okay, we're back on. So proposed general fund revenues, this is really just a review of the pie for where we get the $88 million to operate the general fund. As you can see, 33% of it comes from local government aid, we will talk about that again later. 22% comes from the property tax, sales tax is 15%, and then we have other elements there as well. But the total is $88 million. And then our expenditures, which I think is just important for context, we achieve a lot, and we provide, I believe, strong, important value to our community. This is how we spend that $88 million, it's how I am proposing that we spend it this year. And as you can see, you know, 46% goes immediately to public safety, and then the remaining, what is that, 44%, 54% is spent to cover all of the other areas. If you divide this pie out differently and you're looking just at staff costs, which would include healthcare, which would include our commitment to retirees, again, it's 84% of this pie is going to people, and the people who deliver the services that we need. Looking at it in another way of how we, oh, this is the 84%, so this is just one more little bar graph to see that. Just want to reaffirm what it is that I was seeking to do, and this is really reflecting what I heard from you was important as well. My goals in this Forward Together budget: incorporate Imagine Duluth and priority-based budgeting; benefit from the upsides of difficult choices from previous budgets; leverage the 5% anticipated property tax value growth, that is enormous growth we have seen in the last year, and it's really exciting; maintain a modest increase in property tax from our community; full engagement on sales tax and legislative priorities; and do address quality of life for Duluth residents. And what I mean by quality of life for Duluth residents is that if the only thing that you want is public safety and utilities, you're probably not living in a city. People who live in a city and in a community want transportation, they want libraries, they want parks, they want a quality of life that's incumbent upon us to provide it. So those are the elements that I'm also seeking to protect. Imagine Duluth, very quickly, 2035, really in summary, it was revisiting the plan of 2005, highlighting the five key areas I've already pointed out, and incorporating two new principles into absolutely everything we do, health and fairness. It was based on that robust community engagement, and every single ask, every single thing I outlined in that talk tonight aligns with a policy or a strategy. Every single thing, that was the challenge I put to myself, it was the challenge I put to our team. Priority-based budgeting, and this may be more for the public, who is, I'm sure, watching in huge numbers, the budget presentation. But priority-based budgeting is, I know, something that you have engaged in, and thank you for your time to understand our budget in this process and finding ways to tie in your values and what's important. But priority-based budgeting, it's a really unique and innovative approach to budgeting that Wayne and Jen have brought into the city of Duluth, and as I said before, we are the first city in Minnesota to embrace this. It has been done around the world, it's been done in different places in the United States. I know we won't be the last, because it matches available resources with community priorities. It provides information to you and me as elected officials that can lead to better informed decisions. It meaningfully engages citizens in the budgeting process, and it really escapes that traditional routine and conflict of basing the current year budget on revisions of the old budget. It allows us to look at priorities, and one of my favorite things about it is that each department gets to look at their own priorities. We are no longer pitting divisions and department against one another. Each department is looking at what it is that they provide, who it is that they're impacting, what it is that they are, you know, saving or spending to achieve that, and then really divides it up into how they can meet the goals of the city while meeting their own departmental goals. So ultimately, PBB, we call it, will allow us to better understand our programs, influence the priorities that improve life in our community, and I have seen this budgeting cycle has been felt completely different than other ones, I think, because of everything that we've talked about. So ongoing budget challenges, I actually really wanted to call this slide why budgeting always sucks, but I chose not to and keep it above board. Here are the things that make budgeting really hard every year: increased healthcare costs. We always budget around 10%, sometimes it comes in at 6% or 8%, sometimes 13%, but it is astronomical what that means for us as a city when we're talking about 850 employees. Flat local government aid, and I have a chart I'm going to show you later. Our expenses outpace revenues. If we just provide the same services we're providing now and we don't look at how we're doing it or where it matches values or priorities, we will get outspent every year because that is the nature of what happens when you have increasing costs and flat revenues to cover them. And then our needs outpace resources. We have increased calls for service, we have more people who rely on public services like the library, we have more people who need us to step up and provide the basic mechanics and reliability of daily living, but we're not getting paid more to do that. So we are serving more while reaping less. The top three sources of funding for the city of Duluth's general fund, local government aid, property tax, and sales tax, together, those three make up 70% of our funding resources. So when one of them, the top one, local government aid, is flat, it puts tremendous pressure on every other area. We want to be really mindful of the property tax, we want to grow the sales tax, but there's only so many things we can do with the revenue levers that we have to work with. So here's the local government aid inflation gap. This is what, the top line is what local government aid would look like if it went up with the cost of inflation. 2009, we're at 29 million, today we'd be at 35 million. Instead, we're still at $29 million. That's a significant gap if you were to translate that $6 million, $5 million gap into a property tax that is about a 30% or 35% property tax differential that we're talking about there. And then if we just kind of compare, I really like this bar graph, I used it last year, and I asked for us to use it again. This really compares the healthcare cost to LGA, so you can see that the top bar is really where LGA is, where it stays, how it kind of lingers, but our healthcare is creeping in more and more to use that funding. So in 2011, it really took up about 48% of that fairly flat local government aid. In 2019, it's going to take up 61%. So that means that, again, we've got that gap. It's a little like trying to construct and maintain affordable housing, there is a gap that needs to be filled somehow, and we work very, very hard to try to fill that. So just a spreadsheet on the proposed budget, I know you have all seen this before, this kind of spreadsheet, so I won't spend a lot of time going through it, it kind of reaffirms the other pieces we've already talked through, and it lays out the spending a bit more just outside of the pie chart. But I think this is the sheet that most people like to cut right to the chase to. This really is the outline of how the property tax levy is proposed and spent, how it compares to last year. And for me, the big number is the one at the bottom, that is the one that everyone wants to get right to, what will the property tax increase be? Our proposed city levy tax impact is 3.96%. And then we also do capture the expansion of economic growth that we have seen in the last year, which I think is really important, and really recognizes where Duluth is, how we're growing, and all of the amazing things that are happening here. Finally, I did really want to just briefly touch on the Community Investment Trust. We have not talked about this fund in the past in my tenure as mayor, I've been very careful and prudent about where we look for our resources. In 2015, we chose to invest the CIT fund with the State Board of Investment, and we have seen that grow 26% since 2015. When we put together the CIT fund with our general fund reserve fund together, that dollar amount makes a big difference on our bond rating. We have a great bond rating right now, it's important to me that our credit maintains solid, that our bond rating maintain really high integrity, and we can do that, and we can do that while investing in affordability, especially in a revolving loan fund capacity. And then our general fund reserves, we used general fund reserves last year for $895,000 for the solar garden, so that is reflected, so is the fire truck purchase. So you can see between 2017 and 2018, we dip up and down right around $13 million, certainly considerable growth since the negative number 10 years ago, and that is big thanks to CAO Montgomery and the Ness Administration and the finance team for making that happen. But you can see that we are in some solid financial footing, and I think the community should benefit from that. So between now and year-end, we will have scheduled department and division budget meetings, I think Chair Filipovic, you're working on that. We will have clarity of healthcare costs for next year, we are still waiting to get that number. We will have statewide and midterm elections, so we will have a sense of what it is that may look favorable for the city of Duluth with our priorities. Of course, staff are completely available to you, I know and recognize that the Duluth City Council, you each have your own priorities that are important to you, you have priorities that are important to you as an elected body, so please reach out and let us know not only how we can answer questions to this proposal, but how we can help support your vision. Maximum levy will be set at the next city council meeting on September 24, and the final levy will be adopted no later than December 17. Wow, we got a lot done. It's a lot of me talking, so I just want to recognize that. But also, thank you for your time and attention, and I hope you have some questions that we can discuss.
Thank you, Mayor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor Larson. I hope there are two councilors. If you have questions, please push your buttons. I do want to remind everyone, as councilors are thinking of their questions, that, again, we do have a council budget discussion on Thursday, September 20th, and that we do need to set our maximum levy by the 24th. So unless we are looking at new pri, if we're looking at new priorities as a council, we would want to make sure that we incorporate that into that discussion on the 20th. And there are a few questions. So let's see if I remember how to do this. Counselor Anderson, you are first up.
Thank you, Chair Filipovic, and thank you, Mayor Larson. Wow, a lot of information to take in, and I just have to go with my guts for my first question here. Really exciting to hear about the home renovation fund. $2 million proposed for that budget for 2019. How many homes would you imagine that, how many citizens' homes would be able to benefit from that fund?
Thank you, Chair Filipovic and Counselor Anderson. Thanks for the question. We do propose $2 million to be withdrawn from Community Investment Trust. We don't, I'm not proposing it on a year-by-year basis, so I just want to make sure that that was clear. And we do envision this being a revolving loan fund. I'm actually going to volley your question to David Montgomery, who's been working on packaging this, if that's okay with you. Mr. Montgomery?
Thank you, Chair Filipovic, Counselor Anderson. It's really going to depend on what sort of inventory access we can get to the homes, but our objective is somewhere in the range of 15 to 20 a year. And again, we're hoping this is a revolving process so that we can continually do that as we go along. We're, it'll also depend on a couple of things. One, we're looking to leverage other partners, so the funding would actually be more than that. And ideally, we'd like to see a $4 to $5 million fund, all in. So it'll depend on total amount of funding, and it'll depend on sort of housing capacity and what we can acquire and who we can acquire in terms of redevelopment contractors and, you know, so what kind of capacity we have to actually get the work done. But we're hoping we could do 15 to 20 a year.
And then a quick follow-up question, please. What are we going to say to our constituents in Lakeside and Woodland and in Garry and Duluth who won't qualify for these funds? And when will, when will we see a fund like this that's available to citizens citywide?
I'd love to answer that, if I may, and then toss it to you, Mr. Montgomery. So a couple of things. That would be a great reason why we want to leverage additional investments and get the private sector more involved. I would also say we are targeting and starting in neighborhoods where there tends to be greater tax forfeit property opportunity, greater blight, greater need to provide stabilization to housing. One of the things that I have found that we need to do is provide as much stabilization to the housing market as we possibly can. We have new construction happening at a market rate. We have some new construction that's incorporating affordability. We need some more deeply affordable housing, and we need to work with our state funders who can provide that part, that huge financial gap that's needed. But I would say to our neighbors in Lakeside, I hear you. Help us get the revenue and the dollars together so that we can spread that effort and that focus citywide. Did you have more, Mr. Montgomery?
Yeah, thank you. I just also like to add, we're, you know, the initial look on this is in the nature of a pilot. It's sort of proof of concept. And if we can figure out how to make this work and make it sustainable and ongoing, then we can start to expand it more broadly. We were concerned about rolling something out citywide before we really knew that it would work as a full-fledged concept. Once we get proof of concept on it, I think the opportunities to expand on it now that we know that it will work and how it might work become much, much more possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Next up is Counselor Westerlund.
Thank you, Chair Filipovic. Mayor Larson, just a couple of questions. My first one is in regards to the new policy and comms position. What do you envision this person doing outside of the legislative session? I mean, that was fairly straightforward, but what other initiatives might they be involved with?
Thank you, Chair Filipovic and Counselor Westerlund. Well, I would actually see, for instance, this past year, I have to say, I missed having somebody in-house who could really provide greater focus and help with Earn, Sick, and Safe time. That would have been a perfect role for this person to pitch in on. When we have priorities in broad issues like housing, that is something that, we don't have a housing specialist on staff. We could do that. That requires funding, but this is somebody who could help spread that policy and make sure we embed it. I also see this as somebody who can help ensure that we are fully embedding everything within Imagine Duluth. That is the work of our community development team and planning team, but it also needs to happen with, throughout the organization. And I see this person as being helpful to that. Lastly, the opportunity zone is something that really hasn't been talked about too much yet, just because we're still looking for clarity from the federal government, but there's an enormous sense of interest from investors who want to make sure or want to take advantage of the opportunity to take their capital gains and invest that into properties for which they either get tax referral or they, you know, over 10 years of investment reap benefits. It's my goal to make sure that those investments also work well for our community. There's no requirement that those have to be housing-related or those have to be within our core areas that we've identified for the comprehensive plan. But the reality is, we need somebody who's got their ear and their eye on that and is using and infusing those opportunities to make sure that they're good for the community. So those would be some of my ideas, and I would be open to hearing yours.
I don't have any right now. I'm just, I was just curious to know. You were pretty clear about the lobbying aspect and legislative involvement policy at that level, but it's cool to hear some of your initial ideas about the position. May I ask another quickly?
Yes.
Very fast. You did mention that the solar investment reaped $80,000 in savings in the first year. That's great.
Yeah.
Is that $80,000 being reinvested in renewable energy or in the energy sector or just kind of going back into the general fund?
Great question. Chair Filipovic, Counselor Westerlund, thank you. Great question. I will double-check on that. It has been our intent that that is a recycle, part of it is that it's saving money, right? So then we're able to use those savings to identify other energy projects, and I can report back to you. Certainly has been the intent, and so I'd love to let you know more about that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Westerlund. Counselor Russ is next, and let's try to keep it to two questions apiece.
Thank you. Could you tell us a little bit more about youth programming?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Filipovic, Counselor Russ. The opportunity, I call it a series of fortunate events. There has been a very large AmeriCorps program within the city of Duluth that has provided, in partnership with the school district and the YMCA and the city of Duluth, tremendous impact. It has been primarily, not primarily, a significant portion has been educationally focused in supporting the school district. There was a change in the intent on the part of partners that freed up AmeriCorps, and it made it possible for us to say, you know what? We want them, and we want them to be doing the outdoor recreation, the park-based programming, the kinds of things, not to fully replicate what we used to have, but it is so clear to me that we have some youth gaps, that we need to be staffing some trained adults just in our parks to be facilitating healthy interactions, some mentoring, and some support in our parks. So we're still kind of crafting that, and I know that we had a team that was trying to get here on time so they could answer your question, but I'd be happy to have Will Roche, who is our parks manager. This was really, we've been working on this for a little while. He was really excited. So he's got some more clarity that he can provide you on how those conversations are going.
Thank you.
Counselor Russ. Counselor Cypress, you are next, and we have more councilors in queue.
Thank you, Chair Filipovic. And first, I just want to say in particular, I'm really pleased to see the transportation planner included. Any of us and anyone in the community who's been through any of our very frequent and really frustrating conversations regarding transportation issues, street issues, this is going to be a really helpful thing. But my question is about the housing initiative. The term rehab means a lot of different things, and so I just want to make sure I'm clear on the type of rehab that's being presented here. As I understand it, this is the type of rehab which is intended to take dilapidated properties that are perhaps even in danger of being lost to our community and getting those dilapidated properties into the hands of people who have the wherewithal to fix them up and put them back in the market as affordable housing. So it's not the type of rehab that, say, a current homeowner or even a current landlord would access for kind of routine maintenance. And would I be right in my description of the type of rehab this is focused on? And would that be part of the reason why the Hillside and Lincoln Park are prioritized? Because that's where we have a lot of this dilapidated housing that we're in danger of losing?
May I suggest, Mr. Montgomery? Thank you.
Chair Filipovic, Counselor Cypress, yes, that is essentially correct. We're looking at taking those houses that are, we are at risk of losing permanently, capturing them before they fall beyond repair, repairing them to a state of livability, quality livability, but we're not talking about taking a home and adding a swimming pool and a hot tub, and that's not what we're talking about. We want to make habitable houses. We want to make them in neighborhoods that have needs for broader rehabilitation of houses. And so as the neighbors see some of these houses being fixed up to levels and improved, perhaps others will begin that process on their own properties as well, and we're hoping to create a ripple effect throughout the neighborhoods that we're doing this, which is part of the reason we're starting off by concentrating a little bit. So we get that benefit of concentration of bringing these houses back to life to have an impact on the entire neighborhood as opposed to spreading it thinly all across the town where it's more difficult to create that sort of ripple effect within a neighborhood.
Great, thank you.
I think if I may, Chair Filipovic, too, the least expensive housing to keep within rotation is naturally occurring affordable housing, right? It is really, really difficult and expensive to tear down, demo, rebuild, infill, all of that. What we're trying to do is stopgap and stop that, you know, housing bleed, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Larson. Thank you, Counselor Cypress. Counselor Forzman, you are up, and please keep it to questions only.
Do one better, I'll do one. Thanks, Chair Filipovic. Mayor Larson and the team, I just want to give you recognition for, I know this is a lot of effort to put this in, so thank you for presenting this. And I'm especially pleased to see the budget being matched to the comprehensive plan so well. And my question would just be, since the core investment areas are called out pretty specifically in the comprehensive plan, what steps this budget helps take positive momentum toward developing those?
Chair Filipovic and Counselor Forzman, thank you. Thank you for your question. Yep, we have identified 12 core investment areas in the city of Duluth as part of the comprehensive plan, and I think Counselor Anderson's question about, you know, housing isn't maybe, this initial pilot isn't going to reach all 12 of those core areas is accurate. However, many of the other areas, the youth programming would be hitting those core investment areas. Transportation is about those core investment areas. And really, when we're talking about that four-tier sidewalk clearing system, that is about connecting the core investment areas, ensuring accessibility, and maintaining connectivity for neighborhoods, for residents, for schools. So I feel like we've done some really good discernment about how that's going to impact. Sometimes when we make these decisions, or sometimes when I do, I'm thinking about how, what's this impact citywide, you know? And then sometimes I'm like, well, this, but in this case, we look specifically at the neighborhood. So we've done a little bit of both in this. Hope that's helpful.
And Counselor Forzman, Counselor Van Net.
Thank you, Chair Filipovic. Thank you, everybody, for all the hard work that you've been doing on this. Big, big thanks. A few thoughts or questions even. Thank you so much for the 46% on the public safety end of it. That's, I'm the chair, that makes me excitedly happy that we're keeping that stuff, keeping ourselves safe. Love it. Appreciate that a lot. And the sidewalk, the four-tier, could you talk about that just a teeny bit? And just a side comment, the tax 3.96%, like, ouch. I'm not sure I'm going to have a discussion about that if that moves forward, but I'm more concerned about, wondering about the sidewalk plowing four-tier. Went through it so fast, I was like, what?
Yeah, no, that's great. Chair Filipovic, Counselor Van Net. So I think in order, public safety, good. Glad that works for you. Four-tier system is something that we set up with our partners to make sure that we have safe routes to school, that we have St. Louis County Public Health. And what it means is that we literally have prioritized sidewalks across the city based on where they are, how often they're used, what are the other opportunities or routes to get around. One really great example of a sidewalk that is on our tier system but never got attention last year is one along Grand Avenue. Now, that's a min dot road, but there are certain covenants and ways that we share sidewalk clearing in some of those circumstances. Now, there's a spot that you don't have a lot of other options for walking, otherwise you're in the street. Because we don't, we didn't have enough staff, we didn't have enough equipment, there were key areas like that that really never got cleared before the next snowfall. And now you're talking about people falling, not feeling safe, kids not being able to walk outside of the streets, so things like that. I hope that's helpful. I got a lot of data on four-tier. I'm just not sure how, how much you want me to do. Finally, on the 3.96, I feel such relief at that number, I have to tell you. And so we all may perceive that number differently, and I honor that that's your initial perception. So if you have questions about that, please let me know. I can say, I think my first budget, we flipped the property tax over, which I think was a 10% property tax. Last year, we raised it 4% and made 20 cuts of positions. So what we are able to manage in this budget with 3.96% is, truly feels like magic to me, and I welcome any challenges you may have or any information I could provide.
Thank you, Counselor Van Net.
Thanks, Mayor Larson and all staff for putting this together. I kind of piggyback on Counselor Van Net, that there hasn't been a reduction in police or fire, so that obviously doesn't translate to any officers taken off the street or firefighters taken out of trucks. Is that, is that correct?
Chair Filipovic and President Hobbs, correct.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, President Hobbs. Thank you, Mayor Larson. Thank you, Ms. Montgomery and Mr. Parson and Jen. Ms. Carlson, thank you very much for your presentation on the budget. We will be taking a very short break here and get DTA up for our next finance committee meeting.